Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Lazaro?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski? Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. Coram present, please stand and join in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of City Council meeting July 18th. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Aye.
Any questions, corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, we have none. I have no written communiques. Mayor's report, I do have one item. I believe all of you were notified about the electric aggregation. We need a consensus. It will be on the agenda for next meeting, but we need to sign this contract. Otherwise, we're gonna get dropped. Any questions on it, or? Should we do a roll call? Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, what's the hurry on that? Is there a delay?
From what I understand, I think in the packet a few weeks ago, staff has been discussing with them, and they're either, either we stay on, or they're gonna drop us, correct, Brad? You wanna? And we have till, we got another extension till tomorrow. Go ahead, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you give a little update on? I know we've, you told me we were extended once, but you've been negotiating whatever.
Sure, correct. With the unexpected significant rate drop from ComEd, First Energy wanted to make sure that we were okay with staying with them, extending the contract, you know, retaining the generator program, things of that nature. And a couple of weeks ago in the manager's report, we were possibly leaning towards leaving. After further negotiations with First Energy, we feel it's in the best interest of the city to continue with the program, continue funding the generator program, and continue saving the residents money by being under the ComEd rate. The extensions, originally, they wanted something earlier, I guess technically last month, since now is August, and we got them to extend it until yesterday, and we were able to get them to extend it until tomorrow. So tomorrow is the last day that we can either stay on or get dropped before the August ComEd meter reading date. Unfortunately, we didn't get all the information finalized until late Monday afternoon, which is why I talked to the manager and the mayor on Tuesday and contacted you all yesterday.
May I do a follow-up?
Yes, go ahead.
Who, who was it that delayed the paperwork that we needed to talk about? How can we, it took till Monday to get all the paperwork together? Is it ours, or is it third fault? And another question is how long, how many years is that contract for? What is it, how many, how many months?
Go ahead, Brad.
Sure. I'll answer the second question first. It's still under the same contract. The initial term of the contract was 30 months, and so we still have until June of next year. So we're not extending or changing the length of the contract on this. So it was a two-and-a-half-year contract originally, and the June end date allows us to know the new ComEd rates next year before going back out to bid. So they're gonna go out to bid, think we have a good rate, and then the ComEd rates come out, and we find ourselves in a tricky spot. So the June end date's still a good month to end in. As far as the paperwork side of thing goes, I'd say, I wanna say it's the nature of the beast. It's been between ourselves, our broker, Mr. Hoover at NYMEC, and First Energy. There's been, I don't know, probably 30 or 40 emails flying back and forth trying to make sure that we all understand what it is that's, that's going on and that we're continuing with the program, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So I don't know that you could really point to anybody. It's just, just been the nature of the beast communicating between all three parties, getting to where we are so everybody's in a good spot going forward.
So my question is, the nature of the beast, is it gonna reoccur again? Next time it comes up again? Or are we gonna resolve this? Nature of the beast, now we start getting the next phase of this project off the ground? Or are we going to play, wait till Monday again for paperwork and come to council for approval? I, I'm in favor of it, but the point is, a phone call, and we making decision here tonight, and that don't fly with me.
All right, go ahead. Now I'll let Jeff go first.
Unfortunately, what Brad means by the nature of the beast, council's not here on a daily basis, every day. So we're dealing with these brokers, with the firm, on an hourly basis. Things change. So unfortunately, we can't bring you up to speed as quick, as quick as we would like to. So unless you're sitting here with us 24/7, we're probably not gonna be able to make you happy. But this is as good as we can do, and this is as fast as we can get it to you.
I'll just follow up. I mean, I came in, you know, Brad calls, we got something to sign. When he told me what it was, it's a little change basically in the scope of the contract where they're not matching every month. They've matched a couple of months, but the next seven months, or eight months, whatever we got, the residents are gonna start getting letters. And Brad, didn't you say you figure, from what you heard, the next few months, we're gonna be cheaper anyways? We're still gonna be cheaper. But in that seven months, there might be one month that we're a tenth of a cent off or something. And I don't wanna sign the contract without making sure you guys knew. That's, you know, because it's basically a little change in the... Alderman Woods, go ahead.
I'm, I'm still confused. We had a contract, 30 months, and we're renegotiating a contract?
Because they're gonna drop us. Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
No, we're not renegotiating. They either drop us, all the residents go back to free-for-all with other firms, the generator program ends, they don't match, they do nothing.
Why, why are we getting dropped?
Because their ComEd rates have gotten so low and close to them that they chose to potentially drop us.
Alderman Woods, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, were we not protected in the contract? I thought that was the point of, that we'd always be okay, at least for the 30 months. And if, if my memory's any good at all, they would match or be very close to ComEd's rate. That was a big concern. What if the rate goes down? So now, ComEd drops the rate, and they wanna drop us. I, I, I think I have, you know, some issue with that.
Mr. Wilson, or Mr.? Okay, go ahead, Brad. You go, and then Mr. Bond wants a response.
First, I'll go back a couple of questions to Alderman Wesley's question. This is the last, you know, nature of the beast conversation with them that we're going to have. The next conversation will be with the new firm, should the council go out to rebid in the spring, summer of next year. To your question, there was the match provision in there. You are absolutely correct. There's also a poison pill that if they decided they didn't wanna match it anymore, that they could just send us back to ComEd. And so in order to maintain the generator grant program, keep the predators out of town, the letters going out to everybody, it would also preclude us from going out to bid for another year when ComEd's rates are likely gonna go up again in May of next year. And we already know the next three months, we're gonna be lower than ComEd, and the couple of months on the end of the deal, we're gonna be lower than ComEd when their rates go back up. So as the mayor said, there's one or two months in the middle of the winter where you might be a tenth, two-tenths of a penny off, which on the average household in town equates to, I don't know, $2, $2.25. So there was a lot of factors on the pro side of the column to stay with First Energy. And the, the one or two months we're not even sure will come to pass. 'Cause I believe some like 46 out of the last 48 months, the factor that modifies ComEd's price was, would've put our price below ComEd's. The two months that the price, our price was above ComEd's, they actually did match that, but they took a bath of almost a full penny on the rate, which those two months is really what prompted them to try and trigger that poison pill in the contract.
Mr. Bond, you wanna follow up?
Yeah, and, and that was the standard contract that they, that they provided. And again, the thought was ComEd's not gonna drop to that rate that's, that's, you know, so low that it would be, they'd have an incentive to get out of it. Obviously, it's good for the consumers that they did. But that was, those were the terms, and otherwise, we were stuck with staying with the ComEd rate, which was at the time, I don't know what the difference was, but was significantly higher than the savings that the residents have enjoyed over the past two-and-a-half years.
Almost two, about a year and a half.
Year and a half, so. And that was, referenced as a poison pill. That's not a legal term of art, but that was a, an exit, exit clause for if they did reach that, that floor. They wanted to have the ability not to, not to lose money. The thought was, well, if that reaches there, you know, we're still gonna be ahead of the game, so. But we didn't have an alter, we didn't have any alternative with respect to that particular contract setup.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you are next.
Mr. Bond, have you been seeing this in other communities that they're doing the same thing?
I have. They've got, because ComEd's rates, when everybody came, you know, competition, spurs sharpening pencils, and so that's, that's happening in this, not only with this particular provider. It's happening, a lot of are looking to renegotiate because the rates aren't there. Some of them, it depends on where they are in the contract, too. Some contracts have clauses that allowed for, once it, ComEd rate reached a certain threshold, it was an automatic reopener, if you will. It's automatic renewal for discussion. Some of them had shorter duration contracts, so there was a, it's a variety, but this is definitely, definitely the trend out there.
Okay.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
My question here is, I have no problem following this, but why is a generator program, keeps throwing in our face here that the generator program would stop if we don't sign this contract? The money don't come out of that generator program. That money's been coming out of general fund because we moved money out of general fund to fund that generator program even more.
Mr. Murmish?
You're correct. It comes out of the general fund, but it's funded through the generator program, through the civic grant given to us from First Energy per your direction.
Actually, at first, when we started the generator program, I think we had said 5,000 or 10,000 we were moving out. But then when the electric aggregation came out, we decided to use that money to fund the program. But originally, I think we'd start with 5,000, maybe 10. I don't recall it exactly.
But that money didn't save the whole program? Pay for that whole program?
The money we got from the electric aggregation, basically, we gave back to the residents for the generator program. So it's not like we kept it.
Plus, plus city money towards that program?
No, no.
You're trying to tell me that all that money we saved, we save that much money in this aggregation?
Brad, how much money?
20,000, 40,000?
It was 30,000 a year or something. Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, the, the money we got for the first year from the program was just, just north of 35,000. And to date, with the applications that are sitting on my desk, we would've spent 32.5 in rebates to the residents. So we're still a couple thousand less of what we received last year from the program.
So my question then is, why were we taking money out of the general fund to refund that if it was in that account to be funded? I'm totally lost now, because if you say we closed at 32,000, okay, and today, and I, I probably, I don't think we did $32,000 worth of generators out there to the people. So we're going into the general fund now and funding a program that should be funded through this energy thing. Help me out here.
Go ahead, Brad.
Sure. The, the revenue that we get from the generator program has to be recorded somewhere on the books, and so it's recorded in...
You mean from the electric aggregation?
From the electric aggregation.
Not the generator program?
Correct. The civic grant contribution. Has to be recorded somewhere on the books. So it gets recorded in the general fund. Then when the resident turns in their application, we pay for that out of the general fund. So as a function of booking both of those in the general fund, the revenue and the expenses are matched from an accounting standpoint, and then air-marked specifically for that program. So the revenue and the, the expenses are matching themselves through the general fund. You have to account for it through some accounting mechanism, so.
Alderman Woods, you have a question?
Brad, do we get $35,000 a year in civic grant money? Or is that a one-time through the, for the life of the 30-month contract?
Go ahead, Brad.
It is per year. But you'll notice that it's a 30 months, so the last year's a half year. So we anticipate 17.5 from that last year.
That's money that we're collecting. And if, and people, residents are still, you said you have some on your desk right now. I think they're in this set of bills. And you have more, right? Mr. Wilson?
Correct. There are some in this list of bills, and there's four more on my desk. So we are air-marking the money for that program. I know there has been conversation about possibly funding another program or something out of that money as well. So 35 from last year, anticipated 35 this year, 17.5 for the next fiscal year, which would give you a total of 87.5, if my math is correct.
So basically, just need a consensus that you wanna continue this before I put on, I need to sign it. I wanna make sure you guys are on board before we sign. If you're not, you wanna take a roll call on yes or no? If you're willing to. We have to make it official at the next meeting, 'cause it's not on the agenda. We won't have a meeting for two months? I mean, uh, three weeks?
Yes, to sign it.
If you don't want me to sign it, just say so.
Where do we have to vote on it?
Well, I just wanna make sure everybody's in agreement. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, 'cause that way you have a consensus. It shows that the council took action that didn't come in in time, given the timeline, within the 48-hour notice for posting on the agenda. You are allowed to take action on those things that are emergency in nature and require you to do so. What my suggestion would be is get a consensus. That would give the mayor the authorization to sign that document. It will come back to you for formal ratification at the next council meeting in three weeks.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood, Alderman Woods, sorry.
I'm still, we, we had a, a contract. Contract still exists. Why do we need to vote on something that already has been voted on?
I think my understanding is, if we don't sign it tomorrow, by tomorrow, they're gonna drop us, right? Mr. Murmish?
Yeah, they'll terminate the existing contract. So that would force a higher rate guarantee on the residents for five out of the eight months. The loss of the civic grant for the generator program. Those are the two big ones. And then the hawking from other companies is also a factor.
Go ahead, continue.
We're renewing the contract, 'cause our contract's been canceled, you're saying?
No, all we're doing is staying in the current contract without their price-match rate if it goes lower than ComEd.
So we're modifying the existing contract rate structure slash matching?
The matching is the...
The matching part is coming out. And when Brad told me that, that's why I didn't sign. I'm like, wait a minute, that's kinda changing the contract, I think.
So essentially, it is a new contract?
What's it, if I could?
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, it's a, it's a modification of the existing contract. It is material, because it's a, that's a term. Pricing is a significant component of it. And again, the, the contracts that were available, not only from this provider, but from every provider, they always have, every one of them has a floor in it, that they're not going to give you a price that's gonna allow it to go below so it becomes a losing proposition for those, for those entities. So every one of them had a floor in it where if the rate went below that level, that they had the ability to, it's a, it's an exit clause or an out clause, or I forget what you called it, Brad, a... Poison pill, if you will. But so there's, there's a contractual option for the provider if they reach the rates that they've now reached, where the provider does not have to go through that match. They can just simply terminate the contract, and then you're back in the open market. The open market, you're subject to the market factors, and while it's low now, there's nothing to say that a month from now, two months from now, it's going to be, it's going to remain at that level. You know, if ComEd gets enough people out of the competition, we go back to them, you know, controlling the rates. It also puts the, the program you talked about, but it also puts the residents back in the, in the position where you're going to have, and each of you up here is gonna have somebody calling you, trying to sell you, you know, that, that service. And they're gonna be a provider, and they're gonna go, I think it'll be, there's gonna be a significant amount of confusion to the, to the residents. You've got a short period of time left on this contract, so. But in response to your inquiry, it is an amendment to the existing contract terms, absolutely.
Last question, I probably...
Go ahead. No problem.
So what is, there is no floor at all now? So it doesn't, or... Are there any parameters? I mean...
Brad, I think I asked you the same thing as, will they, will they go below that .592 at all? What was it? Go ahead.
No.
That's what I thought. They've matched all they're gonna match.
Thank you.
Sorry. Just, all right. I just make, wanna make sure we have enough yeses.
So the record is, is there... Is there a consensus to allow the mayor to execute the contract with the, that modifying that, that term? And subject to the matter, coming back for final formal council approval in the next council meeting?
Go ahead. Frank, yes?
Yes. Yes.
Christine?
Yes, are we gonna take a roll call? Or we're just gonna do this?
Just do it in form.
No.
Jean?
What do you ask the pervert?
You have to call me.
Please ask me.
You have to.
I didn't call anybody. Why should I call the mayor?
Because I'll be a yes. Okay. Okay. That concludes my report, Mr. Manager.
I'd just like to remind the residents, Prairie Fest, starting next week, Thursday, August 8th. And Thursday will be a resident appreciation night, and the fireworks will be on Saturday, August 10th. My second item, as you all know, during the last budget planning process for the fiscal year of 2014, the council did decide to hire a new position. That new position was titled Contract Manager. We did hire a contract manager. He did start this week. His name is Jeremy Ellers, and he came tonight just to introduce himself real quick to you all.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening. I wanna thank you for this opportunity to serve as the city's contract manager. And I wanted to let you all know that I'll always strive for excellence and, you know, never forget my, my duties to the city. And that I'm here to serve and represent the city of Wooddale. I'm very excited to serve this council, the city staff, and most importantly, the city of Wooddale's residents. So again, I thank you for the opportunity, and I admire your, your hard work and dedication to making this a great city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Manager, are you not gonna mention about National Night Out Tuesday?
That's right.
That's correct. I, I heard you were gonna be in the Dunk Tank, too, right?
I guess so.
Okay. So yes, Tuesday night, National Night Out. I believe it's, is it the 100th, or 50th, or 30th? There you go. 30th National Night Out on Tuesday evening. So we look forward to residents coming out to that. 5:00 PM, Mike? Yes, and I believe there's free hot dogs and ice cream for all, along with Alderman Wesley in the Dunk Tank. And movie in the park. The last week is next Saturday, and the movie is Back to the Future. Or this Saturday, actually, my mistake.
Farmer's Market?
Farmer's Market?
Farmer's Market's also Saturday. I just got Prairie Fest down the brain. I don't know.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. We have two items on the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Wesley?
Item number two, please, take off the agenda.
Item number two. Okay. Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Okay, one no. Next. Entertain a motion to approve item number one. A resolution seeking to approve an agreement with RJN Group for the 2013 sanitary sewer evaluation survey in a not-to-exceed amount of $139,730. Do I have a motion?
A move.
Second. Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Okay, that passes. Next, committee chairman reports plan and zoning. Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. First, in ordinance amending Chapter 5, Article 1, Section 5.101B of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale, 1993, to substitute the definition of "live music" and other tainment for term "live music." I make a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Any questions? Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
That fails.
Number two, an ordinance amending chapter six, article nine, section six point nine oh three and six point nine oh four of the municipal code of the city of Wooddale of nineteen ninety-three regarding the abatement of weeds and overgrown grass. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions?
Any questions?
Any questions? Alderman Woods?
Not so much a question as I, I'd like to make a, a change. I thought, I thought about this and, and really, I'd like to amend this to, I don't know if it's better. Actually, I think it's better if I, I table this back to committee. I have a lot of questions.
A move.
Oh.
Motion. Item two.
Okay.
That's Art and Alderman Eugene Wesley.
And who, uh...
I second.
Gene?
You, you did the second?
Yes.
And you did the first?
Art did the first.
Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Round two, yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
All right, that's tabled.
And, uh, that is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Roy Wesley?
No report.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Lazara?
Thank you, Mayor. Approval of change order request number two for the NWWTP screen wall extension for maximum construction in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance administration, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No report.
Thank you. Other business, we have, uh, one item. Need a motion to approve an ordinance of the city of Wooddale authorizing the acquisition of property commonly known as two seventy-seven Edgebrook, Wooddale, Illinois for corporate purposes. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Second. Any questions? Roll call. You got a question? You shook your head no. Yes?
Turn your mic on.
My, my concern was, I wanted to talk about this in executive session, but I guess we can since it's out here on open now.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, the, uh, the council had authorized, uh, the negot, the, the offer, contract offer. If you recall, there was a significant difference, without getting into the details of that, in open session, there was a significant difference between what the property owner believed the value of the property to be and that which the council offered, which was predicated upon an appraisal, a recent appraisal. Uh, the property owner or representative of the property owner indicated that they were, after the, the possibility that the city was going to go forward with the acquisition, if we could not reach a, an agreed price, they agreed to the price that was authorized by the city. So, this was the full amount that was authorized.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah, just that, um...
Go ahead.
With the approval of this, this is a done deal. There's no further negotiations, no other terms, no other, just as...
Mr. Bond?
It is a done deal. The only thing we do is, once we get the approval, um, which we got from the property owner on Monday or Tuesday, we order title just to make sure they haven't transferred the, we're not giving the money to somebody who doesn't own the property. So, it's a done deal, so...
Good development.
Yeah, so, so long as they continued on the property through the date of the closing and, uh, so we order a title report and then a title policy is issued to the city, which ensures the city's, uh, interest in the property. So, uh, it was, the only thing left to do would be to secure the title, verify the ownership and then close on the property and tran, and then we would own, have a, a title transferred to the city. But the ter, the terms are negotiated and the property owner has already executed the purchase and sale agreement.
Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval list of bills, August first.